This September 13, 2018, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and a performance of the National Anthem by the Edison Innovation Choir under the direction of Anna Cooper.
Erica, I am in the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight For the ramparts we walked Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave For the land of the free And the home of the... ...of the free!
Madam Sheriff, I may have a moment.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper, and the entire Edison Choir, and all of those Edison parents who are out there supporting your children tonight. Thank you for being with us, and thank you for that beautiful rendition of the National Anthem.
Go Eagles!
Ms. Brumfield is in the back, the principal of Edison. Thank you, Ms. Brumfield.
Thank you, Ms. Daronak-Kofax. In order to comply with Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on September 13, 2018, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? By Ms. Palchek, a second by Mr. McElveen, all those in favor? And that is Mr. Wilson, Ms. Palchek, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Daronak-Kofax, Mr. Moon, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Keys-Gamar, Ms. Evans, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Strauss, and Ms. Corbett-Sanders. All those abstaining, I was about to do that, abstaining, Ms. Hines. Okay. So, 2.03, a few other announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda, and any of the agenda, and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I would like to welcome Mr. Benny Tigner, our student representative for the 2018-2019 school year. His first order of business is to read this evening's announcements.
Thank you so much. It's U.S. Constitution Day and Citizenship Day on September 17, 2018. Constitution Day and Citizenship Day are observed each year on September 17 to commemorate the signing of the Constitution on September 17, 1787, and recognize all who, by coming of age or by naturalization, have become citizens. Recent legislation has renamed the day as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, and urges proper observance of the day. This year, the official observance day is Monday, September 17, and is the 231st anniversary of the nation's founding document. All schools in FCPS will observe this day with activities that recognize the adoption of the United States Constitution and those who have become citizens under the Constitution. Schools will use a variety of curriculum resources to teach students about the importance of the Constitution and responsible citizenship. Throughout the school year, high school students will have an opportunity to participate in service learning projects related to responsible citizenship, which can lead to a civics seal on their diploma. Thank you.
Before we go on, I would like to recognize a retired School Board member, Ms. Liz Bradsher. I understand you're in the audience. Oh, and Delegate Alfonso Lopez has just walked in as well. So, we have a very special introduction tonight, and I call on Dr. Braybrand to introduce our new Region 5 Assistant Superintendent.
Yes, I'm so excited. I think Dr. Ivy is going to do that introduction. We're very excited. This has been an appointment that we shared with the staff a couple of weeks ago, but we're getting the opportunity to share it publicly tonight with the community. So, Dr. Ivy?
Dr. Braybrand, Madam Chair, and members of the Board, I am delighted to introduce and welcome Becky Baneck as the new Region 5 Assistant Superintendent. As Assistant Superintendent for Region 5, Ms. Baneck will be responsible for student achievement assessment, and the hiring of principals in the Chantilly, Fairfax, Westfield, and Woodson Pyramids. She is a proven and gifted educational leader who brings extensive knowledge, experiences, commitment, and excitement to Region 5. She comes into this role with 12 years of experience as a principal and assistant principal, and four years as the sole executive principal in Region 5, which has prepared her very well to assume this role. Ms. Baneck understands the region and its needs, having been a part of the successful hiring, development, evaluation, and supervision in the region. She's built strong relationships with all stakeholder groups, and has worked very hard to resolve complex issues and challenges that are brought to her by parents, teachers, community members, and the School Board. Ms. Baneck has already hit the ground running in these few short weeks, and is having an immediate positive impact in her new role. Having personally worked with her for the last four years, and knowing her work ethic, drive, and passion, I am absolutely confident that the region will be in very good hands to build on the momentum of continued success. Welcome, Ms. Baneck.
Ms. Baneck, would you like to offer a few words?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Corbett-Sanders, members of the Board, Dr. Braybrand, Dr. Ivy. Thank you for your kind words, and for your confidence in me as a leader in this division that I love so much, Fairfax County Public Schools. I am tremendously honored to be selected as the Assistant Superintendent of Region 5 Schools. I stand before you today, well-prepared for this role, because of the opportunities I've been fortunate to be granted by my parents, mentors, leaders, and colleagues, because they believed in me and my limitless potential. It's through these meaningful learning experiences that I learned and have grown as a leader, and I've been able, then, to impact stakeholders that I have served for the past 20 years as a teacher, school-based administrator, and a division leader. I am truly honored and grateful, and I'm reminded that this is exactly what we need to continue to do for our students as we seek excellence through equity. As a Region Assistant Superintendent, I will continue to work tirelessly with our School Board, members of the leadership team, my colleagues in the City of Fairfax schools, our school leaders, staff, students, and community, to provide our students with opportunities to grow the attributes of Portrait of a Graduate, to find and pursue their passions, knowing that one single opportunity, no matter how small it may seem, will lead our students to the next opportunity, and then to the next, and the next. And then they might just find themselves standing before a distinguished School Board, being granted the opportunity of a lifetime. I truly appreciate your support, and in closing, I want to reaffirm my commitment to the stakeholders we serve, to accomplishing the goals outlined in our strategic plan, and to the limitless possibilities before us as we work collaboratively on behalf of the children in this school division. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I would like to call on Ms. Palchek for a recognition.
Thank you. It is my honor to read this. Each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. This observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson. In 1988, President Ronald Reagan expanded the observation period to 30 days, starting on September 15 and ending on October 15. It was enacted into law August 17, 1988. National Hispanic Heritage Month is a wonderful opportunity for our schools and community to celebrate various cultures and traditions, and a tangible reinforcement of the School Board's belief that our diversity is a strength that creates resilient, open, and innovative global citizens. In FCPS, 1 in 4 of our students is of Hispanic heritage, and boasts ancestry from a variety of countries and cultures. These cultures in turn enrich our own school community. I encourage you to participate in programs and events taking place during this time in our schools and community. FCPS values its diversity and acknowledges that all people contribute to the well-being of the community. FCPS is fortunate to have many groups whose members work with our Hispanic and immigrant students, empowering them to be the next generation of leaders and professionals. These include, but are not limited to, our parent liaisons, the Hispanic Educators Association, EduFuturo, and Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee, in addition to the many teachers, administrators, and staff members who support our communities. Now, in Spanish. Cada año los americanos festejan el mes de la herencia nacional hispana, celebrando las historias, culturas, y contribuciones de los americanos cuyos antepasados vinieron de España, México, el Caribe, América Central, y Sudamérica. Este festejo comenzó en 1968 como semana de la herencia hispana bajo el presidente Lyndon Johnson. En 1988, el presidente Ronald Reagan expandió el periodo observación de 30 días, comenzando el 15 de septiembre y terminando el 15 de octubre. Se transformó en ley el 17 de agosto de 1988. El mes de la herencia nacional hispana es una oportunidad maravillosa para nuestras escuelas y nuestra comunidad en celebrar las culturas y tradiciones diversas, y un fortalecimiento claro de la creencia del Consejo de Educación, que nuestra diversidad es una fortaleza que crea ciudadanos mundiales fuertes, abiertos, e innovadores. En FCPS, uno de cada cuatro estudiantes es de herencia hispana, y tiene el lineaje de una variedad de países y culturas. Estas culturas, por su parte, enriquecen nuestra propia comunidad escolar, y los incentiva a participar en los programas y festejos que tiene lugar durante estos días en nuestras escuelas y comunidad. Nuestra comunidad valora su diversidad, nuestra diversidad, y reconoce que todo el mundo contribuye al bienestar de nuestra comunidad. FCPS es afortunada en tener muchos grupos cuyos miembros trabajan con nuestros estudiantes hispanos e inmigrantes, fortaleciéndolos para ser la próxima generación de líderes y profesionales. Estos incluyen, pero no están limitados, a nuestros intermediarios con los padres, a la Asociación de Educadores Hispanos, EduFuturo, y el Comité de Supervisión de los Logros de Estudiantes Minorías. Y encima de todo eso, nuestros maestros y administradores. Quisiera invitar a los miembros de estos grupos y miembros de la comunidad para sacarse una foto con el Consejo. I would now like to invite members of the groups and the community members here to celebrate with us today, to please come forward for a picture with the Board.
Board members, and members of the leadership team, we would like you all to come up for a photo with our newest Regional Assistant Superintendent. And one more.
What's going on, Ryan?
I call on Mrs. Evans for a recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my honor to read this recognition tonight. The American Childhood Cancer Organization has designated September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to spotlight the types of cancer that affect children, survivorship issues, and to help raise funds for research and family support. According to ACO, 15,780 children under the age of 21 are diagnosed with cancer every year in the United States. Approximately one-fourth of them will not survive the disease. A diagnosis turns the lives of the entire family upside down. ACO offers support, information, and advocacy through their community of families, survivors, and friends affected by childhood and adolescent cancer. They are dedicated to improving the lives of children and families living with childhood cancer and engaged in this life-altering struggle. FCPS students being treated for childhood cancer participate in home-bound instruction while they are undergoing treatment or recuperating. We are joined tonight by longtime teacher Jay Cokely, retired from FCPS after 30 years of teaching physical education, and returned to FCPS as a part-time elementary physical education teacher at Woodburn Elementary School. It was at Woodburn where Jay met a little girl named Ellie, who had been diagnosed with acute lymphoblastic leukemia in the spring of 2013. By the time she entered kindergarten that fall, Ellie had lost most of her hair and was wearing hats to school every day. Jay noticed her affinity for fun and cheery hats and organized a hat drive to provide Ellie with a broader selection of hats, and Ellie's Hats was born. Now, thanks to the hard work of the individuals who, like Jay, took an interest in Ellie and her hats, thousands of kids across the country who are battling cancer have received new hats and so much more. On behalf of the board, I'd like to encourage everyone to visit the website for Ellie's Hats at ellieshats.org, and to the American Childhood Cancer Organization at ACCO.org to learn how you can help. At this time, I would like to invite Jay Cokely and some of our FCPS family who have been personally impacted by childhood cancer to join me at the dais for a picture with the school board.
Item 2.07, the Governor VIP Awards. I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Each year, Governor Ralph Northam and the Board of Education name schools that receive the Virginia Index of Performance, or VIP, awards for advanced learning and achievement. The VIP incentive program recognizes schools and school divisions that exceed minimum state and federal accountability standards and achieve excellence goals established by the governor and the board. This year, 66 of our schools were recognized for one of three awards: the Governor's Award for Educational Excellence, the Board of Education Excellence Award, and the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. The criteria for VIP awards are designed to recognize excellence and to provide incentives for school divisions and schools to expand academic opportunities for all students, and to adopt best practices that result in engaging, safe, and healthy learning environments. We will recognize schools in each category. When you hear your school's name, please come forward, and when all the schools in that category are named, we'll take a picture. And school board members, when that happens, please come down to the risers and then remain to the end as we do all of the categories. So I would like to begin by inviting Region Five Assistant Superintendent Becky Baneck to begin our presentation of award-winning schools right here in Fairfax County.
Five of our schools, Cooper Middle, Franklin Middle, Keene Mill Elementary, Longfellow Middle, and Rocky Run Middle were among 14 schools in the state of Virginia that received the Governor's Award for Educational Excellence, which is the highest VIP award presented. I'd like to invite the following schools to the front of the auditorium. Cooper Middle School, Arlene Randall Principal, Cherith Pearson Assistant Principal, and Mike Rath Assistant Principal. Franklin Middle School, Sharon Eisenberg Principal, Tammy Stubblefield, Director of Student Services, Robert Gibbs Assistant Principal, Forrest Reed Assistant Principal. Keene Mill Elementary, Renee Miller Principal, and Ellen Coulter Assistant Principal. Longfellow Middle School, Carol Keem Principal, Wendy Eaton, Rob Plunkett, Kevin Sammy Assistant Principals, Marissa Brooks, Director of Student Services. Rocky Run Middle School, Amy Goodlow Principal, Christine Shabika Assistant Principal.
So at this time, we'll take a group picture of the first category, our Governor's Award for Education Excellence. So if the board would come to the risers.
Okay, so we're gonna split you guys, come in as tight as you can. You can step on the second riser if you'd like.
If you wouldn't mind sliding over to the other side so we're maybe a little more even. Can we balance you, put a couple of you on this side, please? There we go. There we go. That works. Perfect. Okay, we're gonna be looking right up here for two, please. Nice big smiles, one and two. Perfect, thank you.
The board will stay at the risers. We'll announce the next group to be honored.
Thirty-seven of our Fairfax County public schools received the 2018 Board of Education Excellence Award, a recognition of schools that have met all state and federal accountability benchmarks and made significant progress toward goals for increased student achievement and expanded educational opportunities set by the board. I'd like to invite the following schools to the front of the auditorium. Louise Archer Elementary School, Michelle Macrajeorges, Principal. Canterbury Woods Elementary School, Diane Leipzig, Principal. Carson Middle School, Gordon Stokes, Principal. Chantilly High School, Scott Poole, Principal. Chesterbrook Elementary School, Connie Britt, Assistant Principal, Corinda Solos, Teacher, and Rebecca Gosin, Teacher. Churchill Road Elementary, Nick Kilpatrick, Teacher, Megan Brown, Teacher. Colvin Run Elementary School, Ken Youngie, Principal, Mary Lou Carmack, Assistant Principal. Flint Hill Elementary School, Jen Hertzberg, Principal. Floris Elementary School, Gail Porter, Principal.
Okay, looking right up here for two. Nice big smiles, one and two. Perfect, thank you so much.
I would like to invite Region Two Assistant Superintendent Dr. Fabio Zuluaga to continue with the 2018 Board of Education Excellence Awards.
Great, thank you, Becky. Forestville Elementary School, Todd Franklin, Principal. We have the new principal from Frost Middle School, Anthony Harris. Anthony used to be my assistant principal in Region Two, by the way. Come on in, please. Linda Shannon, Assistant Principal, Susan Murphy, Science Teacher. We also have Greenbrier West, Patty Granada. Haycock Elementary School, Heather Boy, Assistant Principal, Scott Reader, Assistant Principal, please join us. Lay Bradock Secondary School, Laura Wetterman, Associate Principal. Langley High School, Kim Greer, Principal. Lemon Road Elementary School, Morgan Birch, Assistant Principal. Madison High School, Sharonda Forrest, Assistant Principal. Marshall High School, Jeff Litt, Principal. McLean High School, Dr. Ellen Riley, Principal.
Okay, sliding in nice and tight, please. Perfect. Awesome. Great, looking right here for two. Nice big smiles, one and, oh, sorry, one more. Perfect, thank you.
I would like to invite Region Three Executive Principal, Mrs. Grace Taylor, who will continue with the 2018 Board of Education Excellence Award recognitions.
Mosby Woods Elementary School, Mariosti, Principal. Navy Elementary School, John Cook, Principal. Oak Hill Elementary School, Holly DeVore, Principal. Cliff Creedle, Assistant Principal. Oakton Elementary School, Keith Eck, Assistant Principal. Oakton High School, Jamie Lane, Principal. Poplar Tree Elementary School, Sue Andajor, Principal, Holly Walker, Assistant Principal. Robinson Secondary School, Denise Lee, Director of Student Services. Sangster Elementary School, Lisa Riddell, Principal. Spring Hill Elementary School, Sarah Aiello, Principal, Denise King, PTA President. Stenwood Elementary School, Peggy Danmeyer, Principal, and Erica Riley, Assistant Principal. Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, Sean Frank, Assistant Principal. Wakefield Forest Elementary School, Sharon Prindle, Principal. Waynewood Elementary School, Alice Baronbaum, Assistant Principal.
All right, perfect, looking right here for two. Nice big smiles right here, one and... Yes, we'll do it again. One more. Oh. She forgot my mark.
Well, Executive Principal for Region Four, Dr. Eric Brent, will read the remaining schools in the 2018 Board of Education Excellence category. There are five.
Thank you, ma'am. West Springfield High School, Shannon Matheny-
Okay, we're gonna be looking right up here for two, please. Nice big smiles. One and two. Perfect, thank you.
The board will stay at the risers. We'll announce the next group to be honored.
Thirty-seven of our Fairfax County public schools received the 2018 Board of Education Excellence Award, a recognition of schools that have met all state and federal accountability benchmarks and made significant progress toward goals for increased student achievement and expanded educational opportunities set by the board. I'd like to invite the following schools to the front of the auditorium. Louise Archer Elementary School, Michelle Macrajeorges, Principal; Canterbury Woods Elementary School, Diane Leipzig, Principal; Carson Middle School, Gordon Stokes, Principal; Chantilly High School, Scott Poole, Principal; Chesterbrook Elementary School, Connie Britt, Assistant Principal; Corinda Solos, Teacher; and Rebecca Gosin, Teacher; Churchill Road Elementary, Nick Kilpatrick, Teacher; Megan Brown, Teacher; Colvin Run Elementary School, Ken Youngie, Principal; Mary Lou Carmack, Assistant Principal; Flint Hill Elementary School, Jen Hertzberg, Principal; Flores Elementary School, Gail Porter, Principal.
Okay, looking right up here for two. Nice big smiles. One and two. Perfect, thank you so much.
I would like to invite Region Two Assistant Superintendent Dr. Fabio Zuluaga to continue with the 2018 Board of Education Excellence Awards.
Great, thank you Becky. Forestville Elementary School, Todd Franklin, Principal. We have the new principal from Frost Middle School, Anthony Harris. Anthony used to be my principal, my assistant principal in Region Two, by the way. Come on in, please. Linda Shannon, Assistant Principal; Susan Murphy, Science Teacher. We also have Greenbrier West, Patty Granada. Haycock Elementary School, Heather Boy, Assistant Principal; Scott Reader, Assistant Principal, please join us. Lay Bradock Secondary School, Laura Wetterman, Associate Principal; Langley High School, Kim Greer, Principal; Lemon Road Elementary School, Morgan Birch, Assistant Principal; Madison High School, Sharonda Forrest, Assistant Principal; Marshall High School, Jeff Litz, Principal; McLean High School, Dr. Ellen Riley, Principal.
Okay, sliding in nice and tight, please. Perfect. Awesome. Great, looking right here for two. Nice big smiles. One and, oh, sorry, one more. Perfect, thank you.
I would like to invite Region Three Executive Principal, Mrs. Grace Taylor, who will continue with the 2018 Board of Education Excellence Award recognition.
Mosby Woods Elementary School, Mariasty, Principal; Navy Elementary School, John Cook, Principal; Oak Hill Elementary School, Holly DeVore, Principal; Cliff Credle, Assistant Principal; Oakton Elementary School, Keith Eck, Assistant Principal; Oakton High School, Jamie Lane, Principal; Poplar Tree Elementary School, Sue Andajor, Principal; Holly Walker, Assistant Principal; Robinson Secondary School, Denise Lee, Director of Student Services; Sangster Elementary School, Lisa Riddell, Principal; Spring Hill Elementary School, Sarah Aiello, Principal; Denise King, PTA President; Stenwood Elementary School, Peggy Danmeyer, Principal; and Erica Riley, Assistant Principal; Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, Sean Frank, Assistant Principal; Wakefield Forest Elementary School, Sharon Prindle, Principal; Wayne Wood Elementary School, Alice Baronbaum, Assistant Principal.
Perfect, looking right here for two. Nice big smiles right here. One and...
Well, Executive Principal for Region Four, Dr. Eric Brent, will read the remaining schools in the 2018 Board of Education Excellence category. There are five.
Thank you, ma'am. West Springfield High School, Shannon Matheny, Assistant Principal; Westbar Elementary School, Mary Tam, Principal; and Jennifer Sellers, PTA President; Willow Springs Elementary School, Dylan Taylor, Principal; Wolf Trap Elementary School, Teresa Kaluki, Principal; Woodson High School, Paula DeSalvo, Assistant Principal.
Try to balance you out a little bit. We're good now. This is perfect. Okay. Okay. Okay, looking right here. Nice big smiles. One and... Thank you.
Twenty-four Fairfax County public schools received the 2018 Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award, a recognition of schools that have met all state and federal benchmarks and made progress towards the goals of the Governor and the board. I would like to invite the following schools to the front of the auditorium. Centerville High School, Amy Bealent, Assistant Principal; Crossfield Elementary School, Mark Granary, Principal; Fairfax High School, Catherine Stone, Assistant Principal; Fairhill Elementary School, Candace Hunstad, Principal; Courtney Cord, Assistant Principal; Andrew Mitchell, Counselor; and Lagardia Myers, PTA President; Great Falls Elementary School, Sarah Harper, Principal; Hunt Valley Elementary School, David Fee, Principal; Kent Gardens Elementary School, Tony Rose, Assistant Principal; Kilmer Middle School, Ron James, Principal; Kings Glen, Sam Elson, Principal; and Chris Ritter, Assistant Principal; Lower Ridge Elementary School, Kim Prior, Assistant Principal. I would now like to invite Assistant Superintendent for Region One, Douglas Tyson, to the podium to complete the list of 2018 Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award recognition.
Okay, where is my script? Liberty Middle School, Adam Erbret, Principal; Mantua Elementary School, Jan Marie Fernandez, Principal; Amy Alley, Assistant Principal; Orange Hunt Elementary School, Karen Tuttle, Principal; Powell Elementary School, Kelly Ball, Assistant Principal; Shreve Wood Elementary School, Michelle Eugene, Principal; and Tylee Holly, Assistant Principal; South County High School, Gary Morris, Principal; South County Middle School, Marcia Manning, Principal; Springfield Estates Elementary School, Mary Randolph, Principal; Sunrise Valley Elementary School, Kevin West, Principal; Terrace Center Elementary School, Rebecca Giadoni, Principal; Thoreau Middle School, Joseph Azimi, Principal; Vienna Elementary School, John Carmichael, Principal; Westfield High School, Anthony Copeland, otherwise known as Tony Copeland, Principal; White Oaks Elementary School, Ryan Richardson, Principal. Come on down. See if we can take a picture. A lot of people.
So we're gonna need you to tuck in as tight as you can, please. Both sides. If you don't mind just angling your bodies sideways, I'll get everybody in. There we go. Coming a little tighter. Perfect. Okay. Looking right here, we're gonna take three. Nice big smiles. One. Again, two. This time look really high. Very... Okay, forget it.
You did not. Oh, you are so bad.
There's a switch.
On the left?
Yeah.
We are now at Section 3.01, Citizen Participation. The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, nine citizens have signed up to address the board, and we will also have two video testimonies. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. This school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home. So language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. So I'm calling Mr. John O'Reilly, who will be followed by Trista Barnhart and George Becerra.
Dr. Brabran, Madam Chair, members of the board. First of all, apologize for my candor. I've got three minutes, so I'm gonna get through this quickly, and I apologize in advance for that. Okay, I'm here to talk about the situation in South County High School and the removal of the DSA staff in its entirety. I'd like to give a little bit of history on it. First of all, there was a problem with a track coach, who apparently did some inappropriate stuff or made some inappropriate comments, and was suspended, rightly so, and an investigation was held. The DSA reported to the principal that a problem had occurred. This is, as you are very well aware, a Fairfax County-appointed principal by you ladies and gentlemen. So he advised her on what to do, and what to get, what information to get together, which he did, gave it to the principal. Later on, she was called to HR, and they asked her for copies of all the statements that she received, which she issued to HR. Sorry?
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Reilly. You're getting into specifics of a personnel issue, so if you could talk without referencing individual personnel...
I'm not. I'm saying to DSA, it's up to you to know who it is.
It's still... It is identifiable, so I would just caution that we welcome your remarks to this board, but we do need to respect the privacy of individuals who have personnel issues before the board.
And who would that be to DSA?
Sir, I really can't...
I'm confused.
You can speak about the specifics at a high school, but you cannot go into the individual personnel specifics. I will have, Mr. Foster, can you comment on this, please?
Right. If you have concerns about individual personnel, you should direct those to the appropriate Region Superintendent to express your concerns. As the Chair has indicated, it's not appropriate for public discussion from the DAAS, and I will also add, she is not here to answer your questions during a business meeting.
I didn't ask anybody to answer my question.
Yes, you did, sir.
What did I say?
Yes, you did. And so I will now speak. Have I answered your questions, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, did I ask you a question?
Sir, during citizen participation, we typically have somebody who presents ideas or thoughts on a specific topic, and so we welcome you to talk about the climate at South County or other issues, but we cannot get into individual personnel issues before this board in the public comments, as I said. So if you would like to address those concerns, we do welcome them. Thank you.
Okay, well then, the situation in South County High School is that there is no DSA department at the moment, because it's been removed. The reason why it was removed is beyond everybody, most people in the area. We, since I can't discuss this thing, which I find amazing that I can't come to you as a parent and as a member of the community and talk to you about this without going hiding behind HR, I find it ridiculous, to be honest with you. I think it's disgraceful, and I think it's shameful the way that these people have been treated. Shameful. Now, I know, I don't, I don't know you guys, but I know well enough to know that you guys are fully believing in what you're doing for the kids, and I have no problem with that. I fully expect that you're all wonderful people, but the way that these people have been treated is shameful. I was happy enough to hear the Pledge of Allegiance being, being read tonight. Thought it was fine. I didn't grow, grow up with it, but I thought it was great. But at the very end, I heard, "Liberty and justice for all." Well, there's no justice here. None. So do you believe in it, or do you not? Every organization has legal advice, they should have, but it's advice. You, ladies and gentlemen, are the ones who make the decisions, and this is a total miscarriage of justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Trista Barnhart, please.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Trista Barnhart, and I'm a math teacher at South County High School, the head varsity volleyball coach, and a parent in the South County School District. We, as a community, were completely blindsided when on July 25th, an email was sent from Region Four that we were having members of our activity office removed. Some quotes from this email include, "In order to ensure that the start of the fall activity season is successful, we will be placing an experienced interim director of student activities at the school. The number-one priority is always the success of our students. South County High School is an exceptional school, and we are committed to working with you to find the best possible leaders." This email is full of lies. We were not given an experienced interim DSA, but rather a retired AP with no DSA experience. The number-one priority is clearly not student success, but rather it seems to be parent appeasement. South County was an exceptional school until FCPS tore the heart and soul out of it. As an employee, I am angry. Where is the transparency from FCPS? Why are we dedicating our lives and giving so much to an employer who is so quick to turn their back on us? Why are we presumed guilty until proven innocent? Why am I being lied to by the people I work for? And instead of waking up happy and hopeful like I used to, that I'm making a difference, why do I now fear going to work? As an employee, I am confused. If these three did something so horrific to be removed from South County, why are they now relocated at other FCPS schools doing the same job? And can, and can FCPS just remove employees without a thorough investigation and without providing a reason? Or is that why FCPS continues currently to investigate this matter on their unfounded decision? Is it that they know they've done wrong and they're trying to cover it up? And let me tell you, since I am in the halls of South County every single day, the morale is low across the board, the students, faculty, custodians, everyone. We have already had two coaches resign, and here is a fact. At the end of this year, we will lose many great educators, coaches, and role models. But luckily, there's one way to stop it and save our school, and you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, can make that happen. In my 12 years as a head coach, I have never missed a game. Even when I had my son on a Friday, I was back coaching on Tuesday. But I stand before you right now, missing my first game ever as my girls are on the court. And as I explained to them yesterday, I am doing this for them. The students will be great if the people there are great, and these three that were removed are great. They have created a family called Stallion Nation, and Stallion Nation is real but barely alive, and we need the founders' back. You will not find three other people so caring, passionate, and dedicated to the South County community. So please, help, I, I promise I'm wrapping up. So please, help fix our school that has been unfairly broken by FCPS, and show us employees that you value us. Please make the decision to overturn this and show everybody that FCPS will do right by its people. You're dedicated to us, you support us, and we matter. Show us that hard work and caring with our hearts is valued, and this right now... I, I promise, I'm finishing. This right now is the chance to change the negative precedent that has been set. So please, change it, so that lies will not be tolerated, we will be treated fairly and with respect, and bad things will not happen to good people who have student success in mind. Thank you.
George Becerra, followed by Denise Crane and Norman Hall.
Good evening, Dr. Brabran, Chairman Corbin Sanders, and school board members. I guess Happy New Year, School New Year to everyone. I wanted to talk about tonight on policy 1475.3, a little lighter than the two speakers before me, plural process on research studies and data collection. As you, as people can see, on the draft of the new version, it's pretty torn up, revamped, and probably because of the stuff that occurred last year in terms of the whole GMU study and so forth. Some good recommendations, some good edits. I'm not saying revamping thing is, is wrong, but at the same time, let's put some historical context of what occurred last year. A couple suggestions on this, that pop up out of me is the balance you have between what present data that might be damaging versus what the public has the right to know. That's the balance you're trying to do with this policy. At the same time, there's some good verbiage in there of who should be the ownership, how it should be distributed, who should have the final say. So if you, when you start this whole process, please be open on that, because at the end of the day, a lot of people like to say, "I got you. See, this is the data we had to get FOIA on, this is what the school system is hiding." So in terms of that aspect, try to show that there's been discussion on the FOIA request that a lot of parents do and community members do. Where's a reservoir or database of that? Because that'll show transparency, too. I know you guys had a discussion on that, instead of reinventing the wheel. Other aspects is told by one of the folks in the, on FCPS, which made a good, great point. How are these studies approved? Where's the processes of that? What do you guys actually accept and not accept? Because I think that's the first key issue. You know, that's like a logical step, I didn't even think about, because I just assumed that my elected officials want the best always. But I also understand that you also are legally held responsible for the things that come out. Another aspect is data that's coming out, SOL data. We splice out data left and right, but I never see it on the magisterial or county district end. What is the thought process, Dr. Brabran, maybe of an added field, new database of breaking down SOL data by districts? Why do you say that? Because at the end of the day, citizens like to know how their elected officials are doing. How after four years, eight years, 24 years maybe, has a district improved in SOL reading, math, and all so forth? It's just a baseline, because when we vote on folks, we like to know on our own districts. But sometimes we only get the big data, and we really can't do anything in our communities if, if our schools are, are thriving in our local school next door, or the school that's a couple miles away. Principal hiring. The two things about this on the work session coming up, principal hiring, one thing I don't see that is a rethinking of what's occurring at the end of the process, end of the year. That's where most changes occur. Most families don't... Most families don't have the opportunity in two or three weeks to end the year. They don't care about that. So let's change the timeline to maybe extending. When there's a bad principal or some issue occurs at a school, you guys have this retire list and an emergency list they come in. Want to extend them to the beginning of the quarter, turn this into a new principal, the community has time to vet who they want, and it's a big continuation of that. School boundaries, you guys are going to talk about. Last thing I wrap up is open house and back-to-school night in between the summer school board members. Why do we have this on the same day before the beginning of the school year? Parents don't have the opportunity. Who, they've never met their teachers, who are their special assistants? They have opportunities. Let's do back-to-school night, maybe cut out open house at the beginning if you're worried about staffing overburdening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Becerra. Denise Crane, followed by Norman Hall and Kathy Ruse.
Hi, I'm Denise Crane. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm here to talk about a culture and a climate issue that I think is very important. I'll abbreviate what I've written to honor your request. The issue at South County High School with the removal of the DSA staff shows a direct lack of respect and support for our teachers by the administration and Area Four. In late July, the DSA and her staff were abruptly removed from South County without prior notification. In fact, this was delivered via mass community email from Area Four. This is completely unacceptable and disrespectful. This is not what we teach our children. This is the antithesis of what we teach our children. And this came from the organization that is supposed to teach that to our children. Protocols were not followed. Disrespect was shown, and the school was left without continuity in the DSA program. This ultimately hurts the students the most. When the South County community did get to band together, we sent emails to our Area Four. We followed protocols. We sent them to many of you. Sometimes we got a response, many times we didn't. We got disingenuous canned email responses. When they realized that the South County community was not going to back down, a community meeting was decided with less than eight hours' notice on August, on a Friday, at 4:00 p.m. And we had over 200 people in that room. These actions by Fairfax County Administration in Area Four show a lack of foresight, a lack of guidance, and appropriate support for their community, their teachers, and their students. You have heard others speak of the DSA staff. They were wonderful people. Is this how Fairfax County treats its valued and dedicated teachers? They recently sent out a survey asking what you wanted. You asked the community what we wanted in a DSA staff. We had what we wanted. We had what Fairfax County values, and you treated them horrifically. This is inexcusable. We feel, many of us, that this is due to a cover-up, that you are submitting yourselves to parent bullying, that there are outside pressures that are involved here, whether it be Title IX lawsuits, individual parents. But this is bullying. It's only on the adult level that this is taking place. We teach this in elementary school, stand up to bullies. We honor it in middle school. We praise those who stand up to bullies in high school. Where is that now? We're asking you, do not cave to these outside pressures. You had something that was very special at South County, and it has been destroyed. This shows... I'll finish with this. A wrong has been done here. It is never too late to do the wrong thing. Do not be afraid of setting a precedent. Stand up to bullying. Stand up in support of your teachers. And do the right thing by reinstating our DSA staff at South County. Thank you.
Okay. Shana Tova. I am sending good thoughts for the Jewish New Year. As I note that I had to sign up for the speaking slot on Rosh Hashanah. The Jewish High Holidays are an appropriate time for reflection and commitment to doing better things for the coming year. Now, I teach a Sunday school, Mitzvah class for my congregation. I enjoy working with 12- and 13-year-olds and explaining why it's important to consider both reason and emotional intelligence as we try to work with others. Members of my congregation, including myself, were surprised to learn from a recent Pew study that there are more Jews in the DC area living in Virginia than either DC or Maryland. So much as I find our special ed students to be hidden during discussions about education, so it seems to be the case as calendars are used within our school system, as in signing up for this meeting. Now, I am among several returning speakers tonight, and my wish for the New Year is that the others all think about what they can be doing to support the FCPS school system in spite of patent disagreements over policies. I know many special education families and teachers who have bones to pick over issues that matter. But I am proud of the fact that over the past several months, SEPTA has held an awards ceremony to recognize many people who are making this system better, from bus drivers to teachers, parents, staff. We have lobbied for increased funding. We have worked on a handbook for twice-exceptional students in tandem with FCPS staff. We continue to look for ways to engage and promote educational events for parents, teachers, and staff so that we can all do better when it comes to special education. So, good works, reason, emotional intelligence. May all citizen-time speakers consider adding value to our school system as well as comments at board meetings. Now, on to the business at hand. First, I want to comment on the staff recommendation on changing the graduation requirements to match VDOEs. Now, SEPTA hasn't formulated a position on this, and we intend to listen and speak as the discussion proceeds. Please note that while the steering committee reflects the wisdom of school and central office staff, this is an area where students with disabilities are not represented during discussions that have a direct impact on their education. Now, last night, I presented an item to the ACSD on the staffing committee item in the last superintendent's briefing. I am grateful to see this description provided to the public, and since there is no related item in the school board agenda for tonight, I thought it made its sense to share it with the ACSD. The ACSD is established for citizens to share concerns about shortcomings with special education, and the committee will review issues and send them onto the board with appropriate recommendations. So to you, I share concerns about the ACSD committee itself. I presume no improper motivation on anyone's part, but this school board-created entity seems to find itself in minor turmoil as it operates out of sync with its bylaws, such as failing to meet last June, complete leadership elections then, and start the New Year with a retreat so that the many new members have a chance to know each other before beginning to carry out the committee's work. It's important to know that any special education stakeholder who appears there benefit from the expertise and concerns shared by the 30 or so appointees.
Mr. Hall.
You're very drastic. Oh, you want me to finish? I'll finish. One sentence, two, at most. Given concerns about FOIA, time pressure, and the lack of an existing set of officers, my recommendation is for your governance committee to make sure such matters are ironed out and that all properly established members are appointed and seated by the time of that next meeting. And if you have a longer appointed...
Mr. Hall.
Okay. I'll let that sentence go.
Thank you.
Next time.
Kathy Ruse, followed by Mike Nie and Tracy Fry.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight about the upcoming Sex Ed Curriculum Committee. The FLECAC Committee last year was a failure. It was an utter, utter failure. They recommended that all children be taught that their sex is not inborn but assigned to them by a hospital bureaucrat, possibly in error, that the truths proclaimed by their own body aren't really true, and that perhaps they have the wrong body and that that body should be changed. This is utterly fanciful, and it's anti-science. Science tells us that XX and XY chromosomes are distinct, that different reproductive organs have different and complementary functions. There's no assigning about it. My question is rhetorical. What kind of mental gymnastics do you, on the board, have to go through to conclude that it's a good idea to teach all children that they're not really male or female? Now, you posted this FLECAC recommendation on others on the website, and you called for public comment. That was a charade, wasn't it? Over 1,300 people responded with comments. It was a record number. And the vast majority of these urged you not to make this change. But you had no intention of giving any consideration to the comments filed by the public, did you? You wasted our time, and you lied to us. You did worse than that. After you voted in this change by unanimous vote of the members present, you voted to direct schools not to ask parents' permission first, right? Board member Tom Wilson made a motion that schools should be required to obtain written permission before exposing students to this. But you voted no. No. Schools won't be burdened, your word, Pat Hines, burdened. We don't want to burden schools with getting parents' permission before teaching them that their own children are neither male nor female. It's worse than just propaganda. Pediatricians have called this child abuse, psychological child abuse. Teaching children they might be born in the wrong body is psychological abuse. It's telling them they can't trust reality. It's cruel. It's psychological bullying. Fairfax County children deserve better. How could you do it? I guess it's easy to exploit other people's children.
Is Mr. Nie here?
I yield my speaking spot to Andrew Chen. Andrew is a Houston High School student. He'll talk about standard diploma. So how's everybody doing? I wondered to myself sometimes, what is it like to be a fake black belt? I don't know. But I do think that education is kind of like martial arts. You can only advance one step at a time. Dear school board members, today I'm going to tell you about one story about one individual Brandon. No big deal, just one story. So Brandon and I met around several months ago on this online platform called Learn to Be. And we will have these online meeting calls where regarding the problems that Brandon doesn't understand in his online school. So I'll try to present him, his most frustrated subject was Algebra I. So I'll try to present him concepts really interestingly. But this did not work when we came across this problem. So it is y equals to x plus 3, all divided by 3. So he just couldn't get this problem right. In terms of our, Brandon thinks x plus 3 divided by 3 is 1/3x plus 3, right here, instead of 1/3x plus 1, a standard problem of the distributive property. So problems of this nature occurred several more times, and here's what I found out, that Brandon never mastered the foundational concepts of mathematics. That is, now he might know some higher concepts of Algebra I, but he doesn't even understand the basic distributive property that we're taught way back in elementary school. I think this doesn't only happen in online school. I think it definitely happens in FCPS right here and right now. So, for example, right, let's say that we're taking Algebra II. I might have got a 75%, and you might have got a 95%. So you get to laugh at me however you want, but the thing is that we will not go over the stuff that we missed, simply because class time is way too precious to be allocated towards reviewing the old materials. So the next quarter comes, and there's like 10 more percent of the stuff that I don't know, and it rolls on and rolls on like your student loan or credit card loan. And so I think that trying to master Algebra I without even knowing the foundational mathematics properties is like trying to, you know, learn a boxing combination when you don't even know how to throw a straight punch. So I reasoned, dear school board members, what if we slow things down a little bit? What if we focus on mastery rather than a completion of the standard diploma? What if the standard of learning only becomes a mere guideline to our mastery but not dictating everything that we learn? This will be challenging, require customization, but the Bill Gates Foundation just funded over $300 million on this, and Mark Zuckerberg is doing the same thing, simply because they believe in every student with a customized education. So let's slow down and master, because maybe then, students can achieve their real black belt. Thank you.
Tracy Fry, followed by Kelly White and Kelly Penzon.
Thank you for having me here. I am here to talk about the current climate at South County High School. First, I'd like to lead off by saying that over 200 people showed up on August 10, the Friday afternoon, to voice concern over that climate as well in reference to our DSA staff removal. We've also had a petition where more than 800 people have signed and written personal comments to attest to their concerns and the dealings that have been going on there. I did some light fact-finding when I was thinking about coming here to speak to you all today, and I looked up your Code of Ethics presented in Chapter 16 of the Fairfax County HR Rulebook. And the Code of Ethics consists of honesty, public service, respect, responsibility, stewardship, and trust. Right off the top of my head, I can think of four of these Codes of Ethics that have been violated, where our school and our personnel have been treated poorly, reprehensible. What's happened at our school is a warning shot to everyone that has witnessed it, that the school board, the county system, will not have the employees back in a moment of distress. Every time, it seems like the complaining entity, the source of the complaint, is what wins out. And perhaps it is, in fact, a litigious world that we live in, but our employers should be there for us. I also wanted to point out that under the same Chapter 16, the Conduct and Discipline chapter that you all have written for yourselves, that the definition of your policy, the purpose and scope of employees, they're entitled to informal warnings, which include sit-down oral conversations between their superiors, which never occurred in this case prior to the removal of the personnel. I'd also like to point out that formal warnings, written reprimands signed by the employees, are also entitled to. And then finally, formal disciplinary action. What has occurred is actually defined in your writings but as being a disciplinary demotion. Even though these people have gone on to work in other schools with other children, making valuable impacts on their lives, across the board, sweeping decisions were made. And even when, again, over 200 people showed up in person, over 800 people have signed a petition, we have barely gotten a response back. And we ask that we have an open, honest conversation, and we talk about restoring the community that South County has worked so hard to build. And because of these good people that have been there since day one, we ask for your help.
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Brabran. My name is Kelly White, and I am the mother of three kids in Fairfax County. I'm here to ask you to ensure that the composition of the FLECAC is representative of families and parents in Fairfax County. I can comment on the many contentious and divisive decisions that the committee has recommended in the past couple of years, but that has already been touched upon. I'm happy to discuss with you many of those decisions, how they're harmful to our kids, but we may just disagree. I would like instead to appeal to your sense of rightness and respect for the heartfelt conviction of parents. Most of us would agree that as individuals, we should not be able to make decisions about how to raise our neighbors' kids. My neighbors are free to raise, nurture, mold, and teach their kids the way they think best. Most of us are parents. We know well the love and concern we have for our kids is powerful. And while we have historically had the right to raise them in the way we saw best, that right only extends up until the point that it hurts someone else or infringes upon someone else's rights. We all get this. I can listen to whatever music I want. It's my right. But if my music is so loud that you are forced to listen to it inside of your house, then your rights should limit mine. This is not unlike some of the decisions being discussed by the committee. A cultural trend may be popular on TV... A cultural trend may be popular on TV, but it is not right to steward the classroom, county taxes, and the attention of children to embrace ideas that many parents are opposed to. There is a way to teach that covers common ground to both sides. The implications are huge. And some of the decisions supposedly made in the interests of some are having a negative impact on the rights of others. Balance on the committee is essential to making the right decisions in the best interest of all students. The FLEACAC is in an interesting and culturally significant position. As you know, the issues they are making recommendations about are impacting over 190,000 kids. For every one of those kids, there is a parent or two who desire to see that kid reach his full potential. And for many, myself included, we believe that the decisions regarding identity, education, about sexual activity, and the introduction of ideas are contrary to our core values that will be impacted by the FLEACAC. So needless to say, the composition of that committee is important. It's really important. And needless to say, who you appoint and the viewpoint they hold will impact my sons and my daughter and your kids. And I would like to ask you as citizens who've been handed responsibility to be willing to make sure that the committee is comprised of people who represent the different viewpoints, including the conservative one. Please reach across the cultural aisle and allow transparent evaluation about what is best in the interest of our kids to happen and don't allow your appointments to reflect primarily one viewpoint. We may disagree as individuals, but my kids and the adults they become mean too much to me to allow a committee to determine what is presented to them as truth. That's my job. The FLEACAC should represent us all well. Thank you.
Ms. Penzon?
Good evening, Superintendent Braybrand and the Fairfax County School Board. I speak to you this evening as a parent, a very proud parent of an FCPS student. And I want to speak to you about the protocol and the policy for the appointment of the FLEACAC committee members. Many parents and Fairfax County residents have expressed concern regarding what appears to be the rigging of the committee and a failure to follow the guidelines that y'all have set forth, which call for evidence of broad-based community involvement on the FLEACAC. Broad-based community involvement is essential to create a community which represents a large number of Fairfax County residents, taxpayers, FCPS students, and parents. Those of us who attend the FLEACAC meetings do not hear discussion that would indicate a broad base of opinions. In fact, last school year, during which time some very questionable changes were made, out of the approximately 30 members of the committee, there were only three voices which appeared to offer opposing views on some of the curriculum changes. Then when one of the three, Laura Hanford, was suddenly replaced by Dan Press, those of us attending the FLEACAC meetings were alarmed by Mr. Press's effort to remove clergy from the list of trusted adults. Evidence that this was inappropriate is that the school board, y'all did not approve the recommendation to remove clergy, and I thank you for that. Mr. Press also supported the language sex assigned at birth to replace biological sex. This proposed change did not represent a broad base of the community at all, but rather a very small group intent on imposing their agenda on the large majority of parents and students. Unfortunately, the school board approved this change, denying the comments of 90% of the respondents of the survey who responded against this change. In other words, the mandatory broad base was ignored in this matter. Looking at tonight's agenda, there's five individuals being considered as new appointees. Three of them nominated by the school board and two students nominated by, I believe, Superintendent Braybrand. I've just got a few questions. How will three being appointed by school board members contribute to the broad-based community involvement standard? What are their qualifications that make them appropriate committee member? How do parents find out about this information if it's not provided by the board? And shouldn't we parents have a say in who will be reviewing this very sensitive curriculum? I also just want to point out that I was confused in pursuant to Regulation 1708, Family Life Ed Curriculum Advisory Committee, community member appointments will serve a four-year term and students will serve a one-year term. But however later, it indicates that they'll serve a two-year term. So I just didn't understand the confusion. I included that on the flip side of the remarks that I handed to y'all with my information. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. We also have we also have two video testimonies this evening.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Braybrand and senior staff. My name is Robert Rigby Jr. I am the current president of FCPS Pride, which is an organization for LGBTQ employees, families of LGBTQ students, and LGBTQ family members and allies in Fairfax County. I want to speak about the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee. It currently comprises parent, faith, student, and medical health representatives, administrators, and teachers who are expert in health curriculum. I would venture that about 80% of the people in the committee are parents and grandparents. The committee works and produces a good product. Indeed, about pre-exposure prophylaxis, I spoke to several doctors and nurses who specialize in infectious diseases, and they were very pleased to see that it was added. They said that it will improve people's health and even save lives. There's an effort led by Liberty Council and the Family Foundation to change state law when the General Assembly meets to make FLA opt-in only across the state. It was proposed last year but died in committee, but much more political pressure will be brought on the proposal's behalf this year. I want to question our data collection procedures in gathering feedback about FLA. We currently use a simple email address to which anyone can send a message. I read all of the approximately 850 comments last year in opposition to the FLA updates and did some Google searches. Almost all of them can be traced to action alerts sent by the Family Research Council and the Virginia Catholic Conference, which is the political arm of the two bishops in Virginia. The way these action alert systems work, a recipient receives an email calling for action and then by clicking a button sends a canned letter to the designated FCPS email address. The option exists to add one's own text. It's no more difficult to generate a lot of letters than creating an online petition. My concern is the FRC and VCC email lists include hundreds of thousands of recipients who are not from Fairfax County. With our current system, we don't end up measuring public sentiment in the county. We instead find out how deep an organization's email list in statewide and nationwide. This is useless information, but it makes good media fodder. Perhaps we could send out a survey to parents and staff in which people could attest that they are FCPS stakeholders and limit the responses to one per device. Not perfect data collection, but better than what we have now. Thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Rachna Heiser. I'm here to speak in favor of reducing the science and social studies requirements to match those required by VDOE. The role of public education is supposed to be to educate everyone to become productive citizens capable of contributing to society. But now, our school system has so many academic requirements and burdensome standardized tests to obtain a diploma that a high school diploma now means college readiness and nothing else. The message is, the only ability that matters is one of academic prowess. Left behind are the students whose abilities and interests are in non-academic areas. Left behind are the electricians. Left behind are the auto mechanics. Left behind are the artists and musicians. Left behind is a well-rounded holistic education. Left behind is portrait of a graduate. Left behind are students whose strengths and interests are either in one academic area or a non-academic area, but have no room in their schedules to pursue these interests or find their abilities. But mostly left behind are the children with disabilities, especially autism, whose disability, often a communication and language disability, make it impossible for them to find their path and areas of strengths in our academic-only environment. Currently, there is one in 59 school-aged children with autism. That is a lot of kids to be left behind. Meanwhile, there are good, paying jobs, steady jobs in technical and vocational fields that are lacking skilled employees. Many of these jobs pay higher than state or national average salaries and are steady, good-paying jobs. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, healthcare, personal care, and construction jobs will account for a third of the new jobs in 2022. Meanwhile, the net value of a bachelor's degree continues to fall. The earnings in 2015 are lower than in 2010. And people with career and technical education often are employed in their fields and more likely to be employed than those with academic credentials. And yet, we have no room in our class schedules for students to pursue career and technical education. We have these great academies, but it's impossible to get there if you're not actually at the school. It takes two to three class periods because of transportation. Given all of the academic requirements, what student has two to three class periods to be able to go to an academy to take a class? It's hard enough for our students to find room in their schedules to take classes at their own schools. Arts education similarly suffers. My own son, who's a brilliant musician and many of you have heard him play, can barely take music classes that he needs. He would be much better served going to the Music Academy at Fairfax High and taking classes there than he would be taking biology or double-block algebra or any of these classes that are useless for his future. This doesn't stop children from pursuing a heavy academic schedule. They can still do it. This change limits no one, but it stops limiting everyone. It's the first step to recognizing and valuing all types of abilities and respecting all types of careers.
Now we will move on to Section 3.02, Student Representative Matters. I call on Mr. Tigner.
Thank you so much. I would like to thank all the speakers tonight and congratulations to all the FCPS schools who received awards as well. To begin off, I'd like to sort of describe what I'm doing for my nomination process. As student representative, I'm in charge of appointing 12 student nominees to citizen advisory committees for the following school year. I received 117 applications and interviewed 27 students. So hopefully, I made the process a little bit more holistic and narrowed it down to some great candidates. However, in my position, and as some of the past student representatives have brought forth to me, it is difficult to represent every student of FCPS. I come from a specific niche. I grew up at a certain place and I went to specific schools. And I've got my own experiences that I can draw on. But in my position, I have to try my best to draw on everyone's experiences. So for this year, me and all the other nominations and future appointees to citizen advisory committees that are also student representatives will be meeting one to two times per month and discussing all the issues that we are all tackling on different fronts throughout FCPS. Throughout this, hopefully, I can create the viewpoints that I bring forth to the board, make them a little bit more holistic, and try to embody different students in FCPS. Speaking about all the diversity, one of the big things I'd like to tackle going forward in this year is methods of learning. A couple of people came forward today and talked about how all these students are different, and they really are. And if you go out there and you go into different classes, and there's some students who are engaged and some who aren't. And really, I think a great way to make sure all students are engaged is to advocate for problem- and project-based learning. Problem- and project-based learning allows for each student to find their own way to learn best. They can be the presenter, they can be the researcher, they can be the one who organizes the group, the natural leader. And it's up to them. And it sort of helps them get engaged and motivated on different topics out there. Besides that, I have big shoes to fill from last year, so I'll do my best and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tigner. Now we will go on to a confirmation of action taken in the closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I now call on Mr. Moon for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to excuse from attendance as course certain students identified in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 22.1, 254B1.
Second the motion. All those in favor? We have Mr. Wilson, Ms. Palchuk, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Darinak Kovacs, Mr. Moon, Ms. Kees-Gamarra, Ms. Evans, Ms. Schultz, and Ms. Strauss. Those opposed? Those abstaining? We have Ms. Hines and Ms. McLaughlin. I call on Ms. Kees-Gamarra for a motion.
I move to grant in part the school reas- no. Is that, okay. In part, the school reassignment appeal of a student who brought illegal drugs to school and to modify the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second. I have Mr. Wilson, Ms. Palchuk, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Darinak Kovacs, Ms. Moon, Mr. Moon, Ms. Kees-Gamarra, Ms. Evans, Ms. Schultz. Those opposed? Ms. McLaughlin. Those abstaining? We have Ms. Strauss and Ms. Hines. I call on Ms. Schultz for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who threatened and mistreated another student and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor? I have Ms. Hines, Mr. Wilson. Oh, it's unanimous. Section 5.0, Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure. Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of June 14th, June 28th, July 12th, and July 26th, 2018, regular school board meetings. 5.02, appoint members to the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee as detailed in the agenda item. 5.03, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Item 6.0, New Business. Following our new business agenda items, there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, award the contract for the chiller replacement at Carson Middle School to the lowest responsive bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.02, award the contract for the chiller replacement at Lane Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the board. 6.03, approve the recommended changes to Policy 1475.3, Approval Process for Research Studies and Data Collection Activities as detailed in the agenda item. 6.04, approve changing the local FCPS graduation requirements in Science and Social Studies for the standard diploma to match the VDOE requirements in Science and Social Studies for the standard diploma as recommended by a steering committee with representation from school and central office leadership. 6.05, appoint individuals to serve one-year term on the Challenge Materials Interdepartmental Review Committee as detailed in the agenda item. 7.0, Superintendent Matters. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent Matters, and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. I want to thank everyone for a smooth opening to the 2018-2019 school year. It's been my pleasure and privilege to visit several schools so far, including Canterbury Woods, South County High School, Quander Road, Key Middle School, and Justice High School. I was able to interact with teacher, students, and parents who were excited and hopeful about starting a- about starting a new school year. We've welcomed more than 1,000 newly hired teachers into our system. Many of those newly hired teachers participated in our Great Beginnings Program, and this four-day program is part of our comprehensive professional development that we use to support new teachers. Those who are new to teaching and those that are veteran teachers but are coming for the first time to FCPS. Our school leaders also deserve our gratitude for their hard work and diligence that contributed to the successful opening of school. You'll be hearing more from me about all the opening of school activities when I present to the Board the annual Opening Schools Report on September 27th. By the way, I mentioned a few schools, and one of them was Justice High. And speaking of that, I had the privilege of participating with many of you in the community in an inspiring rededication ceremony on Friday, September 7th. I want to thank the school board and all of our various departments, facilities, OCCR, and IT, whose coordinated effort made the transition recognition a success. A special note of gratitude goes to Region 2 Assistant Superintendent Fabio Zulaga. Now, Fabio, have you already, is Fabio still here, or did he leave? He was here this evening, and he and his team just did a wonderful job. There were a lot of meetings to pull all of that ceremony together, and the ceremony marked a new milestone for the school as Justice High School strives for excellence and equity on behalf of all of our students and of the community. I'm also proud to announce that we had 254 students from 19 high schools that have been named semifinalists by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. It's an all-time high for Fairfax County Public Schools. 254 students. Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology had 159 semifinalists. All semifinalists were eligible to compete for the 7,500 National Merit Scholarship Awards worth $31 million, which will be awarded in the spring. So we'll just have to track that and see how it goes. In July, Fairfax County was awarded the 2018 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award from the National Procurement Institute. The AEP Award is earned by public organizations that obtain a high score based on standardized criteria and are awarded annually to recognize innovation, professionalism, e-procurement, productivity, leadership, and the procurement function. It's the fifth consecutive year we've received that award. You can clap for that, five years, that's, that's great. It encourages the development of excellence as well as organizational improvement. In 2018, there were actually 200 successful applicants, including 45 counties, 65 cities, 27 higher ed agencies, 26 school districts, of which we were one, 29 special districts, and 18 state agencies. We're one of only eight government agencies in Virginia and one of only 26 school districts in the U.S. to receive the award, and we received it five straight years. So a good start to the school year and looking forward to the weeks ahead, and our thoughts and prayers are with our school districts farther south with the weather. We will continue to monitor the weather, but right now, it looks like we're going to need to put our thoughts and prayers with those farther south of us. We have rescheduled some games, and we will do everything we can to make sure our students get to participate in the activities that were already planned for this weekend weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Now, for Board Committee reports, I call on Ms. Schultz for an update on the Comprehensive Planning Development Committee.
Yeah, CPDC had its first committee meeting earlier this week on Tuesday in a reconstituted form as approved by the Board to begin to develop a recommendation for a charge to bring back to the full Board. We didn't quite, in a single meeting, be able to get through that, but considering the weighty measures that face this district, it is going to take a little bit of time for the committee members to work with each other, with staff. I thank Jeff Plattenberg and Marty Smith, in particular, for being there. It was actually a very productive conversation, talking about how we can start to be more strategic as a Board and looking forward and handling our facilities' challenges. And I anticipate after at least one or maybe two more meetings to bring back a recommendation to the full Board for a charge for us to continue going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Now, we have Board Matters. Can I call on Ms. Stra-? Thank you, Ms. Schultz, and I call on Ms. Strauss for Board Matters.
Thank you. I would like to thank all of the teachers, the administrators, everybody made, who made the opening of schools such a success. And rebalancing bus routes is something we have to do every year, and I know they worked very hard with transportation with that. Also, over the summer, a tremendous amount of construction projects were underway, and I know with a lot of the bad weather we had over the summer, people worked very hard to get those school buildings ready so we could accept our students. The parking lot at Langley High School was done, we weren't real sure. So I thank Mr. Plattenberg, Mr. Sneed, and all of our construction people who made all of that possible. They somehow magically seemed to get it ready, even if it looks as though we're not going to make it, but we did. So I was very grateful. I, too, was very pleased to, to attend the justice rededication. The student presentation and speeches were wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Evans, for all of your hard work. Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for all of your hard work and all of our staff. And we were particularly pleased to have family members of Barbara Rose Johns and Colonel Not everyone could come that we had hoped would be there, but it was a very moving ceremony, and I must say, the students really were remarkable. It was a very proud event. In the last couple of days, I have had an opportunity to attend two interesting presentations dealing with sustainability, environmental stewardship. On Friday, I was at the County Government Center at a presentation that was sponsored by the Great Falls Sierra Club, and it dealt with solar power purchasing agreements, PPAs. There were representatives from the Fairfax County procurement system and also from the industry that can partner with government entities. We also had a presentation on the energy savings performance contracts, and Justin Moss, who represented Fairfax County Public Schools, talked about many projects that we are a part of and our commitment to continue to do that. On Saturday, I was able to go to another event, which there were a number of other Board members there with many representatives, again, dealing across the county with environmental stewardship, Get to Green, many teachers. It was, it is really outstanding to see the number of student projects that are part of our curriculum. We talk about project-based learning, capstone projects. It was really, yes, I can see a student representative, very, very impressive. So good student learning, good hands-on projects, and Mr. Plattenberg did a fabulous job presenting where we are. Our opportunities, and the school board has asked for a thorough presentation on where we are with our issues of environmental sustainability, and he has said that that report will be coming to us this fall. So I thank the group that sponsored this interesting meeting and very much thank the teachers who were there representing much of their student work. So thank you very much.
Ms. Schultz.
I, too, want to thank the schools for having a relatively smooth opening. I will comment. Last year, I think I said that I didn't receive a single transportation concern, or maybe they were the fewest ever. Unfortunately, that did not, that, I don't have a streak on that, so I continue to express concerns for equity issues in transportation in my end of the county, where students have some of the longest bus rides, and a disappointment that we, we address some of these concerns and anticipate them before school starts, and I continue to work with transportation on highlighting those issues. I do want to, I didn't get the opportunity, I had a light on, but, and Becky Baining is no longer here. The initial interactions that I've already had with our new regional assistant superintendent are very impressive, and I want to give credit to her. Anywhere else in the country, and some people who've watched this entire meeting may not understand the sort of hoopla that we made about a region assistant superintendent, and what is that? I don't think we're good enough at communicating what our regions are. Anywhere else in the country, the region assistant superintendent is the equivalent of a superintendent, and in fact, that's a large school district, most other places in the country. And so these really are crucial roles, and I look forward to us continuing to elevate what a region assistant superintendent is and what the staff in each of those regions are and what they do, and continuing to refine that with Dr. Ivy as our new deputy in charge of that area. I do want to let my constituents know that I'm in the middle of planning and scheduling student town halls for all my high schools and working with my principals in the leadership classes, as well as the citizen town halls that I schedule through the course of the year, and my PTA president roundtables will be announced soon to my PTA presidents. I do want to thank, I see in the audience, Tina Williams for the opportunity and the invitation to come and spend time at the SCFT headquarters and sit down with members of the SCFT organization and hear concerns, parochial concerns related to individual schools or individual concerns. I encourage that. I do wish, Dr. Braybrand, if there was some way for a vehicle to be created, because there are a lot of teachers who are not in one of the teacher organizations, and that makes it harder for us to have conversations with employees and particularly teachers on, on the concerns related to class size or, you know, whatever else. The culture of fear and the ability to come forward and speak is certainly a part of it, and so any opportunity for the Board members to have sort of informal conversations with, with more employees is certainly welcome. And I do want to address two areas of concern that we're here, here tonight and here in abstention in two of my schools. South County is one of them, Robinson is another. Just because something is heard, or believed, or seen on social media does not mean that it is true, or that it is the whole truth, or that there are not aspects of a situation on the part of students about employees in a building, on the part of employees about other employees in the building, or on the part of community members about employees in the building. And it's a very difficult time that we're in. I think we're in a new and burgeoning age. It's one of the reasons I started six years ago talking about digital citizenship and the concerns that I have related to digital citizenship. It is damaging, certainly, to a community to feel that they are not heard. I think Dr. Braybrand, in one respect, has attempted to do his level best, as have certain school board members representing these two schools. And I know I'm being somewhat circumspect, and I'm doing that on purpose, but the reality is, is that there are weighty measures or, or aspects of both of these situations that are not known and cannot be known in a public forum. And that, that there is a necessity of law in that, there's a necessity in employment protection, and there's a necessity in the protection of children, minor children, who are entrusted to us. And that may not be a satisfactory answer for, for many, but that there is any thought that this Board does not pay a vast amount of attention, that is not seen at this table, and I mean a vast amount of attention. I would like to assuage those concerns. This August, I had more meetings than I've ever had in the seven years that I've been on the Board, and there was a lot of time and attention spent out of the limelight to make sure that we push this organization to be the very best that it can be, and that we protect children, and that we serve our school communities in the utmost way possible. And that probably won't be enough for some, and I am sorry for that, but it isn't for lack of attention on our, on our part.
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everybody back to this school year and thank everybody who worked so hard to, to make for a, for a smooth pre-Labor Day opening. I've been attending quite a few back-to-school events, and they're, they're just, they're marvelous to attend. One of the earlier ones was joining the principal and staff for a welcome walk for Woodburn Elementary School families, where the teachers went out and went to the homes of their students and, and saw them before the first day of school, just to get to know them and their families and to, and to welcome them. And that was a, I know other schools have done, are doing similar things, have done them, and it was very effective. The students were very, very excited to see their students there in, in their, in their own homes. And the back-to-school nights, I've attended as many as I could and have enjoyed talking with parents, and will continue to do so throughout the next month. Hope to see everybody there. I also want to thank everybody for all the tremendous work that went into the Justice High School rededication. Thanks to my colleagues, we had eight school board members there. Dr. Braybrand, thank you for your excellent words as well, and for the, the many, many people on staff and in the community who worked on the rededication. It was truly a team effort, a lot of hands went into it. It was welcoming also. Principal Maria Eck started us off, and she's a new principal there and getting off to a very fast start, so it was great to, to hear her words as well. And especially, as Dr. Braybrand said and Mrs. Strauss said, the students were just wonderful in talking about the honorees. We, we honored Justice Thurgood Marshall, Barbara Rose Johns, and Colonel Louis G. Mendez, Jr., that night of the rededication, and they were very, very inspiring. So I appreciate that. The family members of Barbara Rose Johns and Colonel Mendez did, did come and join us as well, which was very much appreciated, and one of Barbara Rose Johns' sister came all the way from New Jersey to join us. So that was particularly special, and Thurgood Marshall's son also sent words that were, were read on, on their family's behalf. So thank you to all the people who participated and who contributed to making that an excellent night. And with that, welcome back, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to welcome everybody back to school. I will try not to be repetitive. I've attended a number of the same things as everybody else, back-to-school nights and the Justice High School celebration, which was phenomenal. I, I just, I, I was really, it makes, it makes me stutter, as you can see, but truly, truly enjoyed it, and I'm so excited for that community. I also had an opportunity to attend a meeting where Dr. Braybrand was present with state legislatures, legislators talking about possible alternative funding to address some of our concerns with our facilities. So I look forward to hearing if, if that comes to fruition. But just really happy to be back, and, and also, I want to thank you, my colleague, Ms. Schultz, for your comments. I know that it's hard to sit here sometimes, and people are so distraught about issues, and we see, we get emails, and there are, there's just information in there that we have that we can't share. But everybody at this diocese is really trying to make sure we do the right thing for everyone, so thank you for considering that as you have your discussions.
Ms. McLaughlin.
It's obviously with the start of school, all of us on the Board have been really out in the community and lots to report, but I want to be mindful of our raised time, so I'll try to just capture some highlights as well. It certainly was special for me to get to visit with Dr. Braybrand on the start of school at Canterbury Woods Elementary, where my husband and his two brothers, and then my youngest son, attended, where we also have a new principal, Diane Leipzig, who came from Central Administration back into the building and just has so much joy and passion and excitement for being the new principal at Canterbury Woods. And so that, that was a particular treat for me on opening day. I also want to reinforce something that Ms. Schultz said. We are very fortunate in this school division to have regional assistant superintendents who are truly there to help support our principals, our staff in the buildings, and while we at the school board level, our, our primary goal is to govern the division by providing direction and guidance to the superintendent. We certainly want to be there to partner with our principals and our- We certainly want to be there to partner with our principals and our regional superintendents. But the plea to our community is that please, please know that they are doing the day-to-day work. If you have any concerns at all that move beyond your family's individual needs, and beyond your communication with the teacher and the principal, the regional superintendent's office is a, is a very important way for us to partner with you. And if you need any help at all, obviously, as your elected officials, we can help connect you to the region offices. But it's really important that our families know of that resource. Also, we'll be getting to speak more to our community about the wonderful creation of the Ombudsman position. Armando Perry, who is the new Fairfax County Public Schools Ombudsman, is there again to help serve our families and community. And it, this is the inaugural year for that position. And I know, Dr. Braybrand, I appreciate your meeting with each of the board members and your desire to partner with us as we really create a robust role for that. I've known Armando Perry since my children were in preschool with, with his daughter. So, he's a fantastic leader, and I'm very excited for him in this new role. I also wanted to share that Ms. Keys-Gamara and I were at Fairview Elementary, where the Virginia Senate Subcommittee on Facility Modernization came to tour Fairview Elementary, learn about the needs of Fairfax County schools and facilities, how they can best help the Commonwealth understand that if there is new revenue to be coming from the internet tax, that it needs to be coming to our public schools around the Commonwealth. And so, it was a very important dialogue with many senators, including Dave Morrison, Scott Surville, Barbara Favola. So, it was, it was, it was a, a great meeting, and I appreciated it being hosted. And Dr. Braybrand joined us as well. So, it was good. And Eric Brent from Region Four. I also wanted to just make my colleagues in the community aware that for several years now, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention conducts their Out of Darkness Walk here in Fairfax County. And as we know, September is Suicide Awareness Month. It will be on Saturday, September 29th. And unfortunately, it, it conflicts with Fairfax County's Mental Health Fair, which I, I think I will certainly bring that voice to, to those participating in the Out of Darkness Walk. So, even though my colleagues know that with my background in social work and mental health, this event is being held in Braddock District. For the first time, we have a Braddock District team that has been coordinated by Supervisor John Cook. It will have our state delegates, as well as the police chief. I believe Chairman Bulova is joining the, the walk team. But the goal is to help raise awareness about the Out of Darkness Walk, and obviously, most importantly, suicide prevention. So, to my colleagues, I will have to look for the video on the guest speaker, I always love that, but wanted to raise awareness for those of you in the community, if this is a passion of yours, please go to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention website, and would love to see you all out there in support of suicide prevention. And then, also to my colleagues, I am the new liaison for all of us, for the Human Resource, Human Resources Advisory Committee. And that is, it's only in its second year. And a plea from the last year's chair for HRASC is, please, if you haven't filled it, do so, and if at all possible, try to find appointees that have a, a special skill set or knowledge about human resources, especially in, in the employment sector. That would be very helpful to the advisory committee. And then finally, again, mindful of time, I wanted to let you know, I will send you a summary. The SKIPP committee, the Successful Children Youth Policy Team, we had our first September meeting. Ms. Darnett Kofax had another engagement. But there was quite a bit of discussion about some things that I want to all kind of give you a heads up on. SKIPP is going into, I believe, its sixth year. I think it is absolutely of value, but I, I want to engage our board in making sure that the intent of what SKIPP is supposed to be, the focus as a policy team with the leadership of both the counties, is something that we're, we're all still solidly understanding its role and purpose.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Moon, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think board members seem to have a lot to share, this being the first meeting after August recess. But I, but I am mindful of the fact that we need to go back to closing meeting after the regular meeting, and that closing meeting will probably take a couple of hours at least. So, I'm going to be quick. In addition to being at the back-to-school nights with a couple of school board members, Corbin Run, Oakview, and Kings Glen and Churchill Elementary Schools, I also had an opportunity to visit a, the two Japanese emergent, language emergent elementary schools in Fairfax County. They are great for us, and also Foxham Elementary School. On Friday, because there was a very distinguished gentleman from Japan visiting the school, introducing the game of Go to the Japanese emergent, you know, students. And this gentleman is the, a first, a the only, the only Western Go player to achieve the rank level of Naindan, professional Naindan, which is the highest level. And he's the only American living and playing Go professionally in Japan. And he is also very well-known among the Go players as the English commentator of that famous match series between Gugu Dimai's Alpha Go versus top Korean Go player, Lee Seodor, and also the, a, a top international player, the Chinese player, Koze. There was, you know, that one against the Korean player that happened two years ago, one against, you know, Chinese, you know, players that happened last year. And it was fascinating how the students, you know, were hearing from how this American, you know, went to, went to Japan at the age of 14, lived there more than 40 years playing Go, and how, how he got to be where he is. And it was just learning how to play the game of Go. Thank you.
Ms. Darnett Kofax, please.
Thank you. And I will join with everybody's welcome back to school. I too had an opportunity to visit several of my high schools, elementary schools, and it's always great to see parents and old friends, as well as teachers and administrators. And everybody is so excited and energized. It's just a great beginning, and I'm very proud to be part, part of that. Also, as Ms. McLaughlin said, instead of attending our SKIPP meeting, we had the opportunity, Ms. Corbett Sanders and I, the First Lady of Virginia, visited Riverside Elementary School. So, Dr. Braybrand and several members of our staff and the county's Office for Children were there because she was there to observe our pre-K programs. And I want to thank Principal Bostakis for showcasing this, these amazing programs that he has at his school. And I am also hopeful, as we have the opportunity to talk to First Lady Northam, that additional funding will be made available to state level so we can continue to expand these very important programs to our youngest learners. I want to thank Ms. Tina Williams for, with the Fairfax, who is the president of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers for reaching out to meet. We talked about initiatives and concerns for the coming year, and I look forward to working with all of our teachers' groups in the coming year. And colleagues, we have a very robust agenda for Monday. So, I just want you to be certain that you read your, you do your homework. We're back to school, guys, so do your homework and be prepared for Monday's meeting. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen, please.
Welcome back, everyone.
Ms. Palchak.
Yes, welcome back. And I will join my colleagues, and I will keep it brief. I just want to share one additional event coming up. I will be joining Ms. McLaughlin and the FEA team at the walk. But in addition, on September 20th, so a week from now, Healthy Minds Fairfax is hosting a complimentary private screening, screening of the documentary Into the Light at 6:30 PM at the Angelica Film Center here down the street at Mosaic. A panel discussion featuring Barbara Van Dalen, I believe, Dalen, founder and president of the Given Hour Initiative, the film's director, Charles Stewart, and local mental health leaders will follow the screening. The Given Hour Initiative is a national nonprofit organization that develops networks of volunteer mental health professionals capable of delivering mental health care to individuals in need. All community members are invited, welcome to attend. I registered today, so as of today, there were still seats available. And you can go to givenhour.org and look for the Fairfax event if you would like to join. A really important initiative as we try to combat stigma and help support our kids and our families here in Fairfax County. Remember, stay safe. It's a marathon, not a sprint. I hope everyone has a safe, happy, healthy year. And a special thank you to all of our staff, our teachers, and every school and every form of support for our students as we enter the third week of back-to-school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchak. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to echo my colleagues' welcoming words to this new school year. And I'd also like to welcome Benny to the board. It's good to have you aboard. You did a great job tonight, and I'm sure that we've got many more good nights to come. So, welcome. Just a couple of things. One, I just would, wanted, wanted to give a special shout-out to Principal Lane and her staff at Oakton High School, who kicked off the year within a massive construction site. And as, from my, from my impression, as a parent who drops my daughter off there every day, it seems like they've done a terrific job of managing the chaos of, of that school, which is, if you don't know, it's, it's close, it's located in close proximity to the Vienna Metro, which is, draws a lot of additional traffic to the entrance area of Oakton High School. And they've had to sort of restructure how the parents drive to do the drop-off. And although it has been a little bit difficult, I think that they've done a terrific job. I would, I would also, though, like to thank the parents for their patience during this process of getting this started. I know it's been quite a difficult transition to come back to your school and find it under a huge construction site. So, but there's optimism, because I know that at the end of the process, we're going to have a terrific, terrific school. I also want to just thank Ms. McLaughlin for raising the Out of Darkness Walk. I think that's terrific, and I'll certainly do my best to be able to participate in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Hines.
Yes, hi. I want to also welcome Benny Tignor to the board, coming to us from South Lakes High School. Go Seahawks! Reston has this end of the table well-covered. I, I do want to echo Mrs. Strauss in thanking Jeff Plattenberg, who came to the Get to Green Breakfast on Saturday morning, and just really did such a wonderful job of motivating everybody. Jeff Plattenberg and his team are passionate about making sure that we are on the leading edge in a responsible way when it comes to renewable energy. And I'm feeling good that we will get there. I think the board is behind it, and I think that the turning point is coming, where that will make sense for us very soon. So, and I, I just really want to thank Jeff for, for presenting and being so helpful on that issue, being a leader on that issue. I also want to say happy 50th birthday to Wolf Trap Elementary School. Very exciting night. We looked at the time capsule that was taken out of the ground and had all kinds of interesting things from the 70s, and then from the early 2000s. Big changes from the 70s to the 2000s, that's for sure. And just thank you to everyone, teachers, parents, students, administrators, school-based teams. I'm working myself in an elementary school in Arlington, and sort of the alternative universe, parallel universe, same things happening. I know what you're doing, and I know how much work it is, and also how much fun it is. So, good luck to everybody, and welcome back.
Thank you. I will be brief. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the facilities folks for all of their hard work that they did this past week in preparing our buildings in the event of a potential hurricane. And I know they may feel like, oh, nothing happened, why did we have to do all this? But it was a Herculean effort, and we really appreciate it. We also appreciate the work of all of our DSAs in rescheduling so many games to ensure that if a hurricane hit, we would not hurt our teams. So, a big shout-out, a big thank you for that. And most of the other areas have already been addressed regarding different events, so I won't go over them. But I am going to ask and plea volunteers that are retired in our community, that are willing to give back, we need you to volunteer with Grand Involve. Grand Involve is a wonderful organization that provides supports to our Title I schools. And it is a great opportunity to work with kids and work with dedicated staff to ensure that every child gets the best education possible in our schools. So, consider volunteering a few hours every week. I know that it would be greatly appreciated at Grand Involve. Thank you, and this meeting is now adjourned.